It's four o'clock. I'll call this meeting with the Putnam County Planning Commission to order. Got a few little preliminary things we have to go through, so bear with us. This is a public hearing and we're the Putnam County Planning Commission. We're the designated local planning agency for the county as prescribed in Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and we function under the authority of Article 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provisions of and proposed amendment to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of this board will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Now, normally, we would have that meeting would be scheduled for December 24th. But that's a holiday. It's a county holiday. The county commission has not yet indicated whether they're going to cancel that meeting, change the date of it, or whatever. So, we're tentatively saying this will go before the Board of County Commissioners on January the 11th, 2025. But stay tuned. We don't know the answer to that yet. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of the staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. We ask that you please direct all comments or statements to the board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask you to come forward, be recognized, come to the lectern, and give us your name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the board. This motion will be voted on by the board members and become our recommendation to the Board of-
The B O C C date that's going to be tentative is January 14?
I'm sorry. I meant to say 14.
It's okay.
Thank you, Zach.
You're welcome.
You have to keep me straight. All applicants have a right to withdraw their requests at any time during the application process. No cases have been withdrawn for today. If the applicant chooses to have these cases heard at a later date, then they will be re-advertised in accordance with the Land Development Code. Before we go into our first case, I need to ask members of the board if there have been any ex parte communications-
No ma'am.
-concerning? Does anyone have a conflict of interest concerning either of these cases today?
No.
Okay. And at that point, Ms. Gazella, I'll turn it over to you for L D C 24-000001.
Thank you. For the record, Jennifer Gazella, Planning and Development Services. This application is a text amendment to the Land Development Code. The applicant is Kimley Horn. The agent is Mark Shelton. The text amendment proposes to amend the Putnam County Land Development Code by adding solar farms as a use by right in the agriculture and agriculture estate zoning districts, as well as the addition of a new Section 45-201 defining solar farms and its standards. Florida Statute 163.3205-3 specifically states, "A solar facility shall be a permitted use in all agriculture land use categories in a local government comprehensive plan and all agricultural zoning districts within the unincorporated area and must comply with the setback and landscape buffer area criteria for other similar uses in the agriculture district." Maintaining consistency between Florida statutes, land development codes, and the comprehensive plan is the main goal and responsibility of staff. The proposed text amendment will bring our land development code into compliance with Florida Statute 163.3205. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the land development code as the request is consistent with Florida statutes and consistent with other comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies.
Are there any questions of staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Do the, uh, the, uh... All we're doing is we're saying that that is a permitted use, but the solar farm is not actually, it does not have to be zoned ag. Is that correct?
It has to be zoned. Solar farms-
All we're doing is, is including solar facilities as a permitted use in the ag zoning district. They could be located in other zoning designations though.
Okay.
And by right, so we don't have to come back and re-approve anything-
That is correct.
-as we have in the past. Okay.
But if they buy a commercial property, it can work in commercial as well.
Correct.
That doesn't exempt them in saying everything you get in the solar farms is actually ag, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
No, it's not. That is part of the, uh, the... So, anything related to storage, distribution, generation of a public utility owned by a public utility would fall into this statutory allowance and thus benefit from the change to our land development code. So, if Mr. Hodge owns property and he wants to develop a private, um, solar facility for the generation of power for his profit, then he would be subject to additional permitting and entitlement requirements. But if FPL, Clay Electric, Seminole, any of those guys want to create a power generation facility, they're parked into this, this statutory allowance.
Okay.
So, this is the full, uh-
Full property.
Thank you.
Justin, you have a question?
I do have a question. And I understand this from a conversation that I had with Zach earlier, that all we're doing is being consistent with the statute, which says it has to be, and we have to allow it in agricultural zoning. My question would be, in the staff recommendation, you guys refer to a thing there that says that those community facilities and services are allowed up to 5% in the total area within the comprehensive plan, blah, blah, blah. How do we, how do we monitor or oversee that only 5% of that property? My concern is that we're losing agricultural property and all the ag property around here becomes solar farms. What is our, what is our stop measure for, to prevent that from happening? I mean, obviously, you guys have referenced the 5%. How do we, how do we police that?
So, first off, the, the portion of policy that you're referring to would include any community facility or services, fire stations, wastewater plants, water treatment plants, so on and so forth. The way that we would monitor that is to, you know, review it at the Development Review Committee stage, which we've been lucky enough to work with Kimley Horn on three or four of these solar facilities since I've been here, and they provide us with, um, crazy plans, I mean, very detailed plans of what's going on. The truth of the matter is, I'm not so sure that that policy would apply for these solar facilities because the statute says that we have to allow them in the agriculture zoning district. It doesn't say subject to additional limitations based off of the local jurisdiction's comprehensive plan. So, I believe that statute is giving them carte blanche to exceed our 5% requirement for community facilities.
I agree.
Because the statute is pretty clear.
But I think that we ought to make a recommendation. We ought to come up with something that limits how many solar farms can be put in Putnam County. And I say that-
I would think that that would be kind of a common sense approach to that because just because they have the ability to be in the ag doesn't mean that there shouldn't be any existing rules. You know what I mean? Like, just because they're zoned ag, the statute says they're allowed to be in ag, just because they can have it in there doesn't mean that that is the only rule that applies. There should be, we should have something in the county so that we don't lose all our farm property to these guys coming in putting up solar farms everywhere.
So, I definitely appreciate what y'all are saying, but this statute is due to legislative efforts because rural communities were trying to capitalize off of solar facilities to develop these solar facilities in these rural areas.
And I understand that. But at the same time, the solar facilities only have to pay 80% of their tangible property tax. And therefore, we're not getting anything other than we're getting a solar farm. And it doesn't provide any jobs or anything for Putnam County people. And I don't think that that's the best thing for us to do in all of our ag land. So, I think that somewhere along the line, we have to come up with something, and it may be at the county commissioners, we need to recommend a, recommend something that says, "Okay, this is what percentage we want in Putnam County. We don't want everything in Putnam County to be a solar farm."
I think you, as a board, definitely have the latitude to make that recommendation.
I know that this particular, what we're doing here, we got to take care of it first. And then we can make a recommendation to the county commissioners for something.
I think the bottom line is, we can't have a rule, a policy, that's more strident than what the state has. I think that's what Zach may be saying.
Can I make a quick, can I make a comment? I've checked in a solar farm before I sold my farm. It has to be near a high tension line. It just, you just can't put it in the middle of nowhere and there's no facilities to get that power to the high tension line. They're not going to run wires two, three miles down the road to get to a high tension line. So, it is limited.
Well, I know that when they built the one in Florida Home, that was an issue to get the easements to run the wires to the high tension line. And they ended up getting it, uh, through, uh, other means. They didn't, it wasn't a friendly type of, where they got it.
I checked on my deal, so I knew-
Right.
-what was going on. I could do it, but I didn't qualify for the 100-year flood plan. That's the only thing when I did, looked into it at the time. And that's when it was just starting to go.
Well, I think there's, if there's a will, there's a way. They'll figure out if they, if it's cost-effective for them to build 100 acres or so, they'll figure out how to get the power. I think that's not my issue. Right now, as I understand it, there is some sort of function that limits it to 5%. Now, that may be a, a fact of who is interpreting that rule, but am I correct in that there is a limitation in place as of right now that if the Board of County Commissioners so chose to enforce that, the planning and zoning would somehow be able to, number one, recognize the current percentage of coverage we have as it relates to facilities and put into place something that when we get to that threshold, this or the, this board can make a recommendation, or the county commissioners are able to say, "We've reached 5% threshold. We recommend against development of stuff." I mean, there is, there is something in place for that as of right now, depending on interpretation, correct?
Well, so currently, there's no entitlement process that the board would have to decide on to allow a new solar facility to come through. It's all done administratively through D R C and different agency permitting requirements. I think if, if it got to the point where we were approaching that threshold, it would probably turn into a conversation between the county's legal counsel and the solar provider's legal counsel as to whose interpretation supersedes. I mean, this would be very similar to me telling you you can't build a house on a residential property for whatever reason. I mean, statute already gives power companies-
This is an entitlement.
You guys do tell us that we can't build on stuff because of density requirements or, or a long string of other things that are limitations to why you can or can't build on. There's not just, you know, this, what, this would be the equivalent, what we're trying to do here, just accepting that into the land development code because of statutory requirements is not a one-line, "As long as ag, you can build the farm, you can build the solar farm." So, there would, it only makes sense that there's additional limitations to that. I just am concerned that, and even, and I'm okay with it occurring at the, at the office level, not at the level. So, as long as there's some sort of review that when we get to that 5%, that like, like if I were to come to you now and say, "What's the current percentage of agricultural property that's covered by community facilities and services?" I'm assuming you could, with some research, determine we are at 3.5% or whatever that number may be. I just don't want, I want to make sure that it's, that we're doing it. I want to make sure that we are, that is coming to the attention of, so that we not five years from now go, "Oh, well, we're 10% covered in Putnam County with facility stuff." When it's beyond what we should be.
Yes, sir.
So, as long as it's occurring at an office, you know, at an administrative level or, or review level, I mean, I think we kind of have to go with what's going on today. But I just want to reiterate that we need some sort of control so that everything doesn't go the way of solar farms. We still have that.
Mr. Perry, could you please clarify the statute, the statute, and tell us how that relates to this 5%?
Yes, ma'am. I'll have to look it up.
Okay.
Florida statute.
Florida statute, this is a Florida statute we're having-
It was in the packet.
Right.
Right.
It was just a, it was just a one-line thing that says that, you know, solar farms are allowed in all agricultural zoning, which I understand that. I mean, I got that part of it. I didn't interpret any of that statute to mean that you have to allow them. Just as a, as a condition of zoning, you have to let them in there. But not just because it's zoned ag, we have to let a solar farm be built.
Ms. Reed or Ms. Fulbom, would you like to come forward and, and address some of these questions we have? These ladies are from Kimley Horn, um, who brought this forward to Putnam County. And if you'd just give us your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, through the chair of the commission. Kristen Reed, I'm here on behalf of Mark Shelton with Kimley Horn. My address is 12740 Grand Bay Parkway West, Jacksonville, Florida, 32258.
Thank you.
And I will say, staff did an excellent job presenting the request, the text amendment. Again, it simply takes what the statute says shall be done to incorporate solar farms as permitted uses in all the agricultural categories within the unincorporated area. It also creates a Section 45-201 that adds definition that talks about the other facilities or infrastructure that would be part of the solar farm. And then it provides standards for sets and buffers, which are consistent with the way they've been done, done in the past on solar farms that were done as P U Ds because they're not addressed.
I think there's a distinction between the word "shall" and "may." If the statute had said "may be," you know, located on agricultural zone lands, it's one thing, but "we shall approve it on agricultural lands" is a different connotation. I, Mr. Perry, can you address that?
Madam Chair, I'm not really sure what the question is, but the, the word "shall" is indicative of-
It's, you will.
It means, you will, yeah.
You don't, it's not an option.
As opposed to "may." There's no option there. But as far as your other question, ma'am, about the 5%, can you, can you help me out with that just a little bit?
Mr. Morris, you want to explain that?
I, I was referring to the second paragraph on page five of the staff recommendation. Uh, just above the staff recommendation, um, they refer to agriculture there as shall be allowed up to 5% of its total land area without comprehensive plan amendment. And I don't know what section of the Land Development Code or comprehensive plan is taking that out of, but I was just going based off of that.
That's the way our current comp plan reads, isn't it?
That's correct.
So, does this not generate a need to amend the comp plan?
I'm getting rusty with my recollection of the comp plan line for line like I used to. I'm fairly certain when we had our comp plan revised back in '21, we included language allowing passive solar generation facilities within the ag future land use designation.
Thought we did too. Could this be an old statute or an old comp plan we're looking at? Because it clearly says that, um, "The location, scale, and intensity of community facilities and services types 1, 2, and 3 shall be compatible with the overall character of the existing and future development of the area. Community facilities and services acreage in each district distinct, in each distinct agricultural area shall be allowed up to 5% of its total land area without a comp plan amendment to designate the area as public facilities future land use."
And I really think, Madam Chair, that the community facilities type 1, 2, or 3 are those water plants, wastewater plants. That their, um, uses that the county operates and maintains to provide services to the residents. I don't know that, um, solar facilities fall into those types of facilities. They are further defined within our comprehensive plan. But again, I don't recall exactly that definition.
Well, I think the last sentence of that paragraph, "Passive energy generation projects, solar or wind, are permitted." You know, we've already got that as a separate statement. So, it's possible that 5% deals with those more intense uses of water plants, sewer plants.
But I think getting back to the root of Mr. Morris's question was, whose, whose job is that interpretation? And where do we draw the line as to whether or not solar facilities are community services? Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct. I mean, that's, that's where we're going with this. I don't, I, I, to be honest with you, I don't have any problem with the, the language change in there as long as there's some sort of oversight. So, when we put this in there, it's all of a sudden, whether or not they can build a solar farm on a piece of ag property gets out of our hands. It goes to the administrative level. They're going to approve it. But at some point, staff is going to approve beyond that 5% if they're not tracking it or if there's not an issue brought up about it. So, we're losing a level of oversight by adding this language, which I don't mind because the statute clearly says that we need to. But just because we're allowing it in ag doesn't mean that that is unrestricted free use of solar farms in ag. There should be significantly more questions that need to be answered.
When it says "shall," I think it does. Mike, would you and-
But for the same, for the same reason in that, for the same reason in that statutory language that it says it has to abide by setbacks with respect to that, that clearly said, that clearly details that there are additional parameters besides it just being located in ag property-
Right.
-that they have to meet before they can build that. I just want to make sure we have some sort of oversight on that.
Mike, would you and Zach get together sometime and look at the comp plan, this section of the comp plan, and see if that 5% applies to solar farms or to other types of community facilities? And see if we need to make any amendments to that part of the comp plan.
Well, we can certainly do that.
Does that make sense, Zach? Um, anything you would like to add?
Thank you, Chair. Just, uh, my reading of it is the passive energy generation projects are called out as a separate use in that land use category, so they are differentiated from the community service facilities. But something for staff to really consider and interpret.
Okay. And this is something you're bringing forward for counties that are within your service area or within the Northeast Florida Regional Service Area. I'm just interested in how this came about.
Through the chair. Sorry. I've been with Kimley Horn for three weeks.
Oh, okay.
Um, I've been planning for 24 years, so it's, it's not new to me. I don't know what other projects they've done, but we're just trying to help facilitate because we've done some other projects in Putnam County and had to do them through a P U D before the statute was changed. And this just makes it easier for you all and for staff and to comply with the state law-
Right.
-is to allow them by right, provide parameters that are consistent with the way that you've approved them through the P U Ds before, and just help clean up the code.
But you understand it does not have to be zoned ag-
No.
-to be a solar farm.
Through the chair, correct. This is just compliance with state statutes. So, if it's in another district, another land use category, then certainly there would need to be another process, whether it's a P U D or some special use permit to do that.
Depends on how our comp plan reads on that too. So, staff, again, if you and Mike would get together and, and kind of flesh this out and let us know if we need to make any changes in the comp plan other than this. And this is L D C. Okay. I understand the, the questions, and I understand the fact that we, we have quite a few solar farms already in Putnam County. And, you know, it can be an issue. Is, is the board ready to make a recommendation?
We haven't gone over the changes.
Well, we need a public comment too, don't we?
Oh, okay. We went over the changes.
Well, I mean, I'm ready. They've got them in there.
And do you have any other questions for staff about the changes?
I do not.
Okay.
I do have one question for staff about the process because I think normally this would be brought up by staff as a change versus by Florida Power might, correct?
Or Kimley Horn, yeah.
Or Kimley Horn, representing some might, yeah.
Text amendments can be staff or constituent initiated.
Yeah, we've had a lot of staff, of text amendments that have come from citizens, so. Yeah, we've had a lot of text amendments that have come from citizens, so. All right. It's, go ahead.
Do you have a question?
I was just thinking. I'm sure we have someone that gets the statutes that affect us and would put together those recommendations at some point in time if this hadn't come. It would come up eventually if it wasn't here today.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
In fact, if you'll recall, a few months ago, when we had Robert Jordan from the Northeast Florida Regional Council here going over our evaluation and appraisal report, that was part of that process to see what statutory language has changed and needs to be reflected in our comprehensive plan. And he didn't have anything to add for solar facilities because we had already covered it in our 2021 rewrite.
Right. And that's.
The LDC hasn't been done yet, so it didn't reflect in the LDC.
So, yes, to a degree, but, so it wasn't in our Land Development Code verbatim that solar facilities are allowed in ag zoning district. We've just been following the legislation and statute and allowing them in ag zoning district without any sort of entitlement process or any dealings with FPL.
I have a question. Does, and this is for our attorney, does the language in the statute, would it prevent us from having the language introduced in, via a special use permit instead of just straight by right without any? In effect, we would be bringing it down. Let's say, just for example, where we have on page two in the redlined section there where it says solar farms as under the use category in an ag district in section C instead of including in section D use that requires a special use permit, still allowed in ag but requiring a special use permit. Would the statute, would we be compliant with the statute in that, with that approach?
Let me read the statute again, Justin. "A solar facility shall be permitted, a permitted use in all agricultural land use categories in a local government comprehensive plan and all agricultural zoning districts within an unincorporated area and must comply with a setback in landscape buffer area criteria for other similar uses in the agricultural district."
I got that, but nothing in that statute to me says that if we were to add the stipulation of requiring a special use permit.
That would be something I think Zach could answer.
Well.
I think that the fact that it says a facility shall be permitted.
Well, with all due respect, I directed that question at the attorney.
That's all right, I'm just.
I'm relying on his opinion of it.
No, I agree. Shall means shall.
Unrestricted with.
I would, I would, you know, caution the board to go too far afield from what our, what the actual petition is and what we're supposed to do with that and what might occur in the future. But, I mean, just looking at the statute, it seems relatively or very clear to me as to what it actually means and what we can, and what can be done under this statute. Does that make any sense to you at all, Mr. Morris?
Yep.
I mean, yeah, we can keep going back to that.
Right. I feel like the confusion is the difference between shall be allowed in ag versus shall be allowed unrestricted in ag. That's, I feel like that's the two, the two angles we're discussing here.
I'm not sure what to tell you other than, you know, we do have a staff that, and we do have a development review committee that certainly has very qualified people looking at it and trying to determine where they need to go with this. And I'd once again encourage you to try and, if we can, focus on what we're trying to do right now.
Oh, I got it, but this is just a kind of a, this is the only time we get to talk about these things is when they come up as a topic. And so granted, we're kind of straying away from the exact point of your thing, but it has to do with the bigger picture of what's happening here. And so, yeah, it's just part of the conversation.
Mr. Perry, I want to come back to one more thing. Anytime a state statute says you shall do something, is it not true that a local government does not have any leeway to do anything more restrictive than what the statute says?
To do something more restrictive?
Or less restrictive, you can be, you can be, less restrictive, you can't do anything.
Well, the.
The language is clear.
Well, yes, but the statute, like you said, it is clear here. So whatever you're going to do on a local level, you have to adhere to this.
Right.
I mean, does that make any sense?
You don't have to agree with it.
No.
You don't have to agree with it, but you've got to do it.
But I can promise you, every piece of agricultural land in Putnam County is not going to be a solar farm.
No, no.
I can promise you that.
Not located.
It'll be more development.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but those lines go across the river and they go all the way through Nine Mile and right on. There's a lot of area that those lines cover.
Oh, yeah.
In different companies.
A lot of solar farms.
Could be, but your developer's going to pay more for the land in a solar farm, I can promise you.
Is there anything else, any other questions or any other discussion before we can wrap this up and make a recommendation?
We just need public comment, Madam Chair.
Are there any public comments about this? I didn't have any speaker cards. Or against this particular change in the Land Development Code? Okay. At that point, do I have a recommendation from the board?
I will move that we approve the changes to the Land Development Code as amendment to the Land Development Code, LDC 24-00001, as it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of our comprehensive plan and the state requires us to do it, so.
I'll second.
I've got a proper motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here and welcome to Kimley Horn. We'll probably be seeing you again.
Hopefully, thank you.
Our next case is REZ 24-000010. Who's up for this, Jennifer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you again for the record, Jennifer Gazzal, Land Development Services. This application is to rezone agriculture estate and residential 1 to all residential 1. The applicant is Thomas and Lori Leonard. Their agent is Jennifer Wilson. This parcel is 3.74 acres, located at 126 Lake Como Point Road in Pomona Park. The purpose of the request is to make the lands consistent, have reduced setbacks and uniform requirements. The property owners would like to build a new residential single-family home utilizing the requirements and regulations of the residential 1 R1 zoning designation. The parcel is approximately 6.74 acres, however, approximately 5.08 acres are submerged lands. According to the NWI wetlands layer and the FEMA flood zone layer on the GIS reference map, the lands do appear to contain wetlands and is located within the FEMA flood zone A. FEMA flood zone A is a special flood hazard area. Before being purchased, the subject parcel was two separate parcels. One was zoned agriculture estate while the other was residential 1 R1. The AE zoning district maintains a front setback of 40, the sides and the rear are 20 feet. The R1 zoning district maintains a front setback of 25 feet, 10 feet on the side and 20 feet on the rear. Waterfront setbacks for either zoning district is 50 feet and the vegetative wetland buffer for either zoning district is a minimum of 25 feet. Should the applicant's request be approved, the parcel will be eligible for building permits to construct a single-family residence adhering to the regulations for the residential 1 R1 zoning district. Additional considerations may be requested by the property owner or approvals of variances or special use permits as needed. Shows your aerial view. Future land use. The zoning. Flood zones. And wetlands. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from agriculture estate AE and residential 1 R1 to residential 1 R1 as the proposed amendment is consistent with the adopted goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and is compatible with existing development in the area.
Questions of staff? I have a question. Has this house already been built?
There is an existing house there. I believe the applicant is here. I'm not sure if their plan is to demo that one and build a new one. I think that that's the plan, but I would refer to the applicant on that.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay.
Good evening, commission. You'll have to forgive me, my voice is kind of going in and out. Jennifer Wilson, 4201 Bay Meadows Road, Jacksonville, Florida 32217. Yes, to answer your question, there is an existing house there now. The land owner plans to demo that house and build a new one for his family to enjoy for generations down the line.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add with that?
Yeah, ma'am, I think they covered it all. Thank you, Jennifer, for your stop report.
Anything, any questions of the agent on the board?
Seems like a no-brainer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any people in the audience who would like to speak either for or against? Please come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Josh Davis. I live at 121 Lake Como Point Road, Lake Como Street Road. So I live two doors down. And I am okay. I don't know what the plan was, what detail was, just received notification. I am okay as long as there's a single-family home there. I would be concerned if there's more than one single-family home, subdivision of the plot. Our road is in atrocious condition. It's horrible. It is unpassable. After about 18 months, it's totally unpassable. I personally have spent money to fix the road on several occasions. And there's, I don't know what the governance is to get roads fixed around here. I don't know if it's something to be accounted to or for a person responsible, but there are very few of us that actually maintain the road, the number of people that live on the road. So I would be concerned with any additional population. Our road has also gone from mostly residents that are there part-time to the weekend or vacation-type homes to small apartment residents. So the residents, there's a lot more traffic, so the road deteriorates much faster now.
Is that a private road?
I don't know.
Staff?
Yes, Madam Chair, it is a private road to be maintained by the property owners of that road.
Thank you.
But I agree, your road is a problem. Anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular application? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I move for approval of REZ 24-000010, as it is consistent with goals.
There's, have a proper motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Joey, we got you there. All righty, we have a proper motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed? Thank you. This has been approved and we go far from here. Is there any old business to bring before the board at this time? Is there any new business?
I think we need to look into limiting the solar farms in Putnam County.
Can I second that?
As Madam Chair, I did hear that part of that was commercial, that the inside where all the wires went, even though it's a small five acres or something, that's where all the brains are, where all the wires go. I heard that they had to pay commercial on that. And it was okay, I mean, everything around it was ag, but the middle, every many acres was actually commercial.
Zach, can you speak on that?
At least we got a little bit more, but she says no.
No, ma'am, I mean, I don't know anything about, it happened to be ag for that distribution portion.
It'd be commercial.
That corrected. I don't know.
You probably have talked to the.
I mean, it is commercial. The whole thing, 400 acres, is commercial. I have talked to tax appraisers office for that, to get that information. I wouldn't think.
Well, when I checked in, you pay more than ag, but it's not top of the line. It does go up if you do a solar farm. It does go up.
No, I mean, that's what, so the tax, the property appraiser exempts that out of the ag.
Right.
But that's what he calls.
Right.
I know.
And that, that could be a confusing point. All right.
I don't think the state of Florida did us any favors.
No, they entirely have done nothing.
Favor.
Mm-hmm. That happens. Is that just something you're saying casually, Mr. Hancock? Or did you want to put that in the form of a motion to make a recommendation with the county commission or?
I think, yes. I think that we ought to have some sort of board that comes together and says, okay, we want to identify how much land we're actually going to allow to be solar farms in Putnam County and put a limit on it. I just don't think that they're doing us, they don't do us any favors. I mean, they don't do anything for Putnam County. They bring in a lot of workers at the beginning and then that's it. And then we still got to look at the 20-year plan of what we're going to do when these panels go bad and they have to dispose of them. They don't have a proper disposal for them yet. And I think that that needs to be addressed.
So are you putting that in the form of a motion?
And the other thing that I believe is you got these big companies coming in and buying and putting in these solar farms and then if they decide later, and I know we're looking at future and you can't decide what's happening, but now they're buying all this agricultural land and they're going to have it and then they can go back and develop it and they're not paying anything in taxes to start with. So now they're going to get all this land cheap, pay no taxes on it for 20 years, and then they can turn around and sell it to a developer. Now, that's my fault.
The rich get richer and the poor get poorer.
That's fact.
Zach, do we have any, like, can you, do you have an idea of the criteria when, if somebody makes the application to put a solar farm in it and it goes through DRC, what all do they look at?
We look at access to the property among, you know, checking through the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan extensively to ensure that the use can locate there. We also look at the access, we look at the buffer, we look at the setbacks, we look at the impervious surface from the panels on the property. That's just my, my department's function, planning and zoning. Then you also have Public Works looking at culverts and swales and appropriate drainage. You've got, it's all permitted through Environmental, Department of Environmental Protection rather than St. John's River Water Management District. They have to have an ERP, an environmental resource permit to locate on that property. And then they're also exempt from building codes as well if it's not a manned facility. However, generally, in my experience, the power company that's connecting to their grid wants the voluntary permit to connect, you know, their equipment to the grid to ensure safety and compliance and.
But there's nothing, there's no regulatory requirement on our side that basically looks at the equipment that's going in there? How do, how do they propose that? Hey, here's a solar farm and they have a generic idea of what's going there? Or are they required at any time to give a detailed set of drawings of the actual equipment that's being installed? Or is that out of the purview since it doesn't require a building permit?
So they're, they're not required for the building permit component. However, they do have to satisfy Fire Marshal and Fire Protection, NFPA, you know, all those handbooks. So truthfully, our Fire Marshal gets most involved in what type of batteries, how many batteries are stored on site, how is it all wired together, things of that nature.
Mr. Hancock, do you have a motion?
I do. Madam Chair, I have a motion. I make a motion to the Board of County Commissioners to establish an Oversight Committee to explore how many solar farms should be allowed in Putnam County.
Is that a recommendation you make a motion to recommend?
That is a recommendation.
Okay.
That we make a motion, I guess.
Or you make a motion to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners? Or you make a motion to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners?
I do. I think that they need to establish... They're the ones that are going to have to say, okay, we want an oversight committee to just look at this area. Doesn't have to take a second. Third.
Okay. I have a motion. I'm going to see if I can read this and see if Jennifer and I... Jenny and I agree with this. Recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that an oversight committee be appointed to look at how many solar facilities will be allowed in Putnam County? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Got a third.
Good call.
Okay, I have a proper motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I'm going to vote aye, but again, I think our hands are tied on that time.
I'm going to vote no, so whatever.
I'm going to vote aye for the...
I don't believe our hands are tied. All we're saying... All they're saying in the statute is if it is... If it is zoned agriculture, then the solar farm can be...
Shall be allowed to go there.
Shall be... No, they shall be allowed.
Right.
But I don't think that anyone can tell Putnam County how many of what we have, what we decide. We should be able to decide. We're people...
I don't disagree with your argument, but I don't think...
I don't think it's possible.
Yeah. I vote aye for the sake of letting the county commission decide on that.
I think that there ought to be a limit.
I don't disagree with you, but...
I mean, too much of everything could be bad. I don't know. What do you think, Judge? You don't want to talk?
I don't have a dog in this.
Of all people, you're the one that should have a dog in this fight, telling us what we can and can't do. But we can certainly make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. That's not a problem.
You know, I can do so, I know, so...
That's right.
So, anyhow, that's done. Anything else under new business that needs to come before the board?
I'm going to beat a dead horse. I got Zach. That statute, was that this year or was that '21? Did that statute?
Twenty-one.
It definitely wasn't this year. I want to say it goes back to either 2018 or 2020.
I think it's 18. It's when it was proposed and maybe approved in 2020, something like that.
But since then, I know we've had some PUDs for these.
We have.
So, I've been here since 2021, and I've not seen a PUD for a solar facility in my tenure here.
Okay.
I think the most recent one was...
I guess it does seem like it seems like...
When they built the Rice Creek facility, they didn't go...
Rice Creek is not a PUD. That's straight zoning. I think the most recent one is Tupelo Solar out in East Palaca.
Yes, we had that one.
That's at Rebel's Farm.
Yeah.
Correct. And I want to say that PUD was around 2016, maybe 2018, something like that. It's an old one.
When they do the one on Core Farm Road out in Florahole. Yep.
That was the first one. That was an...
That was a wild issue.
That was the second one. They started in Hawthorne. Yeah.
It was one on Rodeo Drive, I think.
Milrose, I don't know, in Interlochen that was a little bit newer.
That was the third one, I thought, yeah.
Yeah, there's one in Interlochen, and then the one that's in Hawthorne is bifurcated by Alachua and Putnam.
Yep. That was our second one. So, I guess my point in asking that question is, yes, they have taken over a lot of farmland, but they haven't... Some farmland, but they haven't gone and, you know... It's not like all of our ag land is now being used for solar.
No.
I mean, I still agree...
Unless you live on Core Farm Road, then it looks like it all has.
Yeah. I agree with your premise that...
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm beating a dead horse. Let's stop. It's okay.
Maybe.
You have time to beat horses if you need to.
I would think there should be some kind of stipulation to put in a PUD or something that requests us being able to put in a solar farm.
I don't disagree, but the state does, so...
And maybe it needs to go back to the state of Florida.
PSC.
And say, hey, why are you doing this stuff?
Well, the statute doesn't say unrestricted. It says you have to allow it in the zoning. So, we allow it in the zoning, but everything else we do, outside of solar farms, everything else we do comes with a whole list of other restrictions or requirements that are made for whatever the development is. So, it doesn't make sense that solar farms fall in this category where they're the only thing that are allowed unrestricted into that zoning. So, there's got to be some sort of oversight. It's my opinion.
Joey, did you have some... Yes, that's fine. No. Mr. Froelich has an announcement to make.
You got it in front of you. I didn't keep myself a copy. I'm going to resign at the next meeting, which I think was December 11th. After that meeting, I will be done for a while.
Can we vote against that?
I'm sure everybody in staff would like that.
Can we make a motion against that?
I don't know how that would stand up, but we can try.
Probably as good as the one we just made.
Yeah. That's right.
No, I understand. I understand this is...
I've been over seven years. I was shocked. So, I enjoyed it, and it's time to move on, do some other things.
We appreciate your service.
Okay, we do have the minutes from the September 11th meeting before us that need to be approved. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes as you've been presented?
Second.
Who was that second? Was that Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
...come before the board. We appreciate your sticking out the meeting with us. Beverly Crossing? We hadn't seen it.
That's correct. The sign was placed incorrectly. It was originally slated for today, but it will be going to December 11th and January 14th. So, December 11th, the signs will go back out. They should have been removed, but they will back out in the next week or so for December 11th.
I'm sorry, sir. I wish I'd known that earlier. We could have saved you from sitting through this. What else do we have coming up in December, Zach?
Do you know what it is? Jennifer, do you know what the other rezone is?
We'll have a rezone trying to do from C2 to C3 in Palaca, the town of Palaca. And then I believe Michael is presenting a subdivision also.
Yeah, Beverly's Crossing, yeah. And just to reiterate, it's not in the city of Palaca, but it is very close, right on Highway 17.
Well, the city of Palaca's city limits are weird. Yes, they are extremely...
It's very close to the city line.
They wiggle-woggle around, let's just say that, so... Anything... Nothing else to come before us, then this meeting stands adjourned.